All right, welcome everybody to the June 23 meeting. We will call to order. As always, we start out with a few announcements. Town Hall will be closed on Friday, July 4th in observation of Independence Day. Carolyn Spear will be leading a Moonlight Yoga, representing the cycles of the moon on Thursday, July 10th at 9:30 PM. At the Lorraine Rogers Soccer Field, please register on our website. And our next thing is a presentation by Chief Dell from Mechanus Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Welcome Chief Dell.
The agenda so early, I appreciate it. By all means, and thank you, of course, to, I want to make sure that I thank you for the relationship we've had, you know, over the years. I celebrated my three year anniversary yesterday here at Mechanus Franklin Park. Thank you very much. I had no gray hair when I started, so I don't know what's happened, you know what I mean? But more importantly, I appreciate the support that the community has provided us over the last several years. So thank you for that. As you can see, I called my presentation, high performance, high value, right? So I want to describe first how much we perform, right? So our average response time to calls in the community is about seven minutes. It really rotates like 6:58, 7:03 every month, right? So total calls year to date here for our entire service area, right? So we do cover five communities or just shy of 5,000. And of that 5,000, 59% of those calls do take place in Mechanus, and 45% of the population we serve is actually all in Mechanus, right? So Mechanus is not a small community, as I've come to learn, and I'm still learning the, all the roads, right? So just to show you a little bit about our call volume increase, you can see that in 2008, we responded to just, just under 6,000 calls. And in 2024, we came to go close to 10,000 calls, and this year, we certainly anticipate that being the case. One of the things, key factors for us is how many patients do we actually transport, right? Because, you know, I could talk to you all about how many calls we go on, and every single one of those calls are important, and we're providing service on all of those. But of course, you know, it's important to understand that as a business, you know, we have to make it work, right? We sort of have this whole philosophy, if there's no margin, there's no mission, you know, we don't have the ability to do much with respect to getting revenue. So taking folks to the hospital is, is our meat and potatoes and providing the high level of care that we do. You can see, of course, we're available 24/7, 365, operating out of three stations. And it's important to understand, you know, as much as I don't like to talk about money, talk about money, because I believe me, I love telling you about the great clinical care we provide. As we stand here today, right now, you know, two of our three in-service units are on calls in Mechanus. It's, it's late as Friday, we had another successful cardiac arrest save, with the kind of cardiac arrest save where we didn't just take them to the hospital and then they perished later. You know, these are folks that is the person who will have dinner, you know, with their family this evening, right? So, and that has happened. We've had 14 cardiac arrest saves, return of spontaneous circulation since the beginning of the year. And I believe six of those folks are having dinner with their family this evening, right? So that is something that, you know, like, high performance EMS is the only way you're getting, right? It's rapid response, it's highly qualified individuals operating with the best possible equipment. But what I have to talk about money, right? Our transported, our billable calls, everybody thinks, well, they get all these calls, they have all this money, right? It's a strange business, because not too many businesses that you go to, that you will only get paid for 60% of the work that you do. Right? And so that is really bizarre, right? And then I say we get paid for 60%, because those other calls may be the fire calls, maybe they're patients that don't go to the hospital, or whatever the case may be. And then we bill, you know, for, for all those calls, that 60%. But of the 100% that we bill, right, we're only receiving reimbursement on about 40%, right? So not to confuse the numbers, you know, but does anybody else want to receive 40, 40 cents on every dollar that they bill? I, I mean, it's not the greatest, you know, business to be in, right? So we, of course, again, high performance, we, we obtained our national accreditation in April 2024. And I was neat to be at a conference, in fact, just the latest today, in, in Kentucky, with other ambulance services from across the nation. Being nationally accredited is something that is really highly looked upon by other ambulance services in the industry, because everybody knows how hard it is to obtain it. And, you know, so it was neat to be one of the select few that have achieved that. Why am I here? Is your third page of your packet there, and is, of course, to talk about seeking predictable and sustainable funding. And, you know, the next page, there's several pages there, talks about, I have lots of opportunities to, we try for grants and all those types of things. But the struggle that we have with all those things is, of course, there's no guarantees on that. There's no guarantee that the residents will continue to subscribe or contribute to, you know, our capital campaign. We were looking for predictable and sustainable funding, and we think that comes from municipal funding. We have, we were successful this year, I should say, last year, in obtaining five-year agreements with Pine Marshall and Bradford Woods. We did that convincingly with, based on households, as opposed to call volume, or as opposed to the number of residents, which, right, is actually very beneficial. As you guys can appreciate from a Mechanus perspective. And we do have a verbal agreement in place with Franklin Park. You know, how do we use that money? How do you anticipate us, how do we plan to use that money? Ambulances, I remember when I was spending $80,000 on an ambulance, and I thought, boy, that's a lot of money. But they're $400,000 now, right? You know, we have several that are well over their useful life to. Cardiac monitors, you know, that little black box we carry, right? You know, that saves a life, right? But it's $65,000, and nobody would, right? But that's what it costs, right? So replacing equipment, replacing vehicles, what have we asked? With the next few pages, the municipal support request, and it shows you breakdown what, what we're asking of each of the municipalities over the next five years. And I think it's important to understand that, you know, high value, right? So we're only real, and I say, only 7% of our budget is based on municipal support. We're working very hard, right, at our, at our billing, at our grants, in our capital campaigns and other campaigns. We're doing everything we possibly can to keep the municipal request as low as possible. And you can see that really amounts to about $10.61 per household versus per call, which could get much more expensive. There's another page there, really shows you all of the grants and so forth that we have submitted. I know that was important for you, Jason, the first time I present. You know, Chris, tell us what you've done, right? You can see, we are very active with our grants, we're relatively successful. Other fundraising opportunities we have there under our business drive and so forth, and then the capital campaign and the, and the subscription drive. And as much as we're happy that we would do well, seemingly financially, on the subscription drive, it's 19%. Only 19% of, of the residents actually subscribe, right? So if we could boost that number, it's something that we're working diligently on. Actually, we've hired a marketing company to help us get our message out. Maybe we're not clear enough on what it is that we do. There's another handout there for you that shows you some of the cost savings initiatives that we put together. And then just summarizing, before I ask for questions, right? We're here providing what it is that you need, right? We're here for the community in every way that we possibly can, providing the highest quality patient care. We brag about our patient care, it's what we do. We don't do anything else. We don't have a rescue truck, we don't have a boat. We don't do other things. 100% of our training is dedicated to, you know, providing the best medicine. We are happy, I, I was able to share, just a few weeks ago, we received a notification from the American Heart Association, kind of an accolade, recognition for our cardiac care, as well as our stroke care. Something that, you know, is pretty unique. Effective cost saving strategies, you know, you likely, you would expect, you wouldn't expect me to come here and just keep not doing anything to run the business properly, but just keep asking you for money. And we've had, again, impactful fundraising strategies, and I know that, you know, one of the major initiatives for me in the three years is just being completely transparent. I think all of you know, you all know my phone number, I think I've received phone calls from probably all of you at one point or another. If you have a question, I, I have an answer, right? So, so our request, of course, is this, this funding commitment, you know, we're looking to have a five-year arrangement. It has been a struggle for me all of 2024. I don't want to, I wouldn't be exaggerating if I told you that I spent the better part of seven months working on these presentations, right? And, and like, none of you would want that, you wouldn't want that, you know, it's just bad use of my time, bad use of the organization's funds. And again, being able to have predictable and sustainable, we're able to make decisions about the vehicles that we purchase and those types of things, you know? So, questions, and I suspect you have many.
Let's do this in an orderly fashion. Who wants to go first?
I just want to say, I think you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And I don't want anybody in the world that could have done just as well as you.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that. I, I will tell you, I, I feel like a guy who walked into an organization that just needed leadership. We have great people, there's a lot of good structure there, you know? So I was kind of fortunate, you know, and it's been a great to be here. So thank you for saying that.
Other questions? Trish, Jack, or John, or Dawn?
Yeah, I want, what could you break down the, the, of the calls that you're going to, that you're not able to bill for? What's going on there, and are you needed?
I'm sorry?
And are you needed at those calls?
Are we, so, you know, it's a call for maybe a diabetic, you know what I mean? That when we get there, you know, we're able to give them some medicine and get them fixed up, and we end up not transporting. It's the fall, and we have, you know, a high elderly population. It's the fall that really they just need to sort of picked up, maybe check their values, put back in bed, they don't want to go to the hospital, nor do they necessarily need to go. When it comes to the fire calls, we don't actually respond to every single fire call, right? But we know which ones we have to go to, and we're glad to be there for the firefighters. And, you know, with some of the departments, they come to calls to help us on a regular basis. It's the good intent call, someone sees someone asleep in a car, you know what I mean? But they think they might be that, right? So we respond to that call, you know, it ties up the resource, but, you know, when you get there, fortunately, they're okay, you know, most of the time. You know, so it's those types of calls that make up that 40% of those calls. So we can't not go to, does that answer your question?
I won't sleep in the car anymore.
Don't sleep in the car anymore, especially not on a hot day.
If I may.
Well, go ahead.
Your community outreach has been phenomenal, and I've had a chance to see it firsthand. Being this, you know, I serve as a safety and security director at St. Aden's, and your folks have given us stop the bleed AED and CPR training in each of the last three quarters.
Great.
It's phenomenal. I want to congratulate you, because I've had the privilege of going to some of the ambulance authority meetings, particularly the last one, where your auditor said that under your direction, went from a minus 95K to a plus 540K. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
The other thing that I noticed in the meeting the other night was, this doesn't always happen, but leaders need to be leaders. And you were a leader, you, you got out of agreements with AHN and UPMC, they're worse stifling to the ambulance in the area. My hat's off to you, Chris, with the national accreditation, but I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
Those businesses operate on a 90-day cash reserve basis.
Sure.
After looking at all the information, you're operating on a 180-plus. In fact, a lot of times, it's like 225, as, as I've been able to ascertain. I don't think that's a bad thing. I just need to understand why you're different from every other business.
Sure, so we have had, when I first started here, one of the things that was requested of Mechanus and Pine and Marshall was a separate one, right? We obviously did our own audit every year, not our own, but we made it outside firm. They recommended the six months. Whenever the other auditor from Meyer Dussel that was hired by you folks, they also insisted that we have that six months, because episodes like COVID, which we agree hopefully never happens again, right? Really sacked the organization, you know, so there was a point in time when the organization was actually doing pretty well financially. And then COVID came along, right? And just like any doctor's office, right, if we don't have patients coming in the door, right, we have no revenue coming in. And the call volume dropped off very substantially during COVID, right? So, and in fact, to say that we were just sort of catching up from all of that would be true. And we don't, and since we don't have the ability to create attacks or do anything like that, it was recommended by two different auditors that we have that six-month reserve to deal with those types of situations.
Until the billing situation came about, right?
But that.
Ross Westview has a billing situation, right?
Yeah, they have a, a fee, the fee charge.
A fee in lieu of tax. Okay, right.
And then. I hope that answers your question.
It did.
You know, we did, that, that's a general industry number, but it was, that was interesting to hear two auditing firms use that same number for any emergency ambulance service.
Okay, then, over the last two years, you guys have gotten two ambulances as part of your rotation.
Sure.
And you've gotten two grants for those ambulances that paid for them in full, correct?
Yes, uh, no, not in full. Neither one necessarily paid for in full, right?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there was one was for like a $200,000, we were able to apply that toward a remounted ambulance. To explain that, you know, you take the metal box, you know, off the back of the ambulance, and put it on a brand new set of tires and wheels and steering wheel and all that, you know, we call that a remount. And that saves us substantially, saves us probably the, almost a third of the cost of an ambulance, right? So that's good news. We, and we also have received, I think, $300,000 the prior year. That was able to be largely applied for and probably covered like three quarters of the cost of the next day.
Okay, so my question there lies, the rub for me is, since you had to budget it for these ambulances, and you utilize the grant monies towards the cost of the ambulance. I mean, rest of my go.
Oh, is that a great question? And I appreciate you asking it. You know, we of course have an operating budget, and we have this thing that some folks would call an upper, a, a capital budget. But in reality, it's really a capital, I don't want to use the word wish list, because that sounds, it's a capital plan, right? But if we don't have funds over and above our operating, we don't, we're not able to fund, you know, those capital needs, because we do not have a capital budget. We, we don't, you know, have, or simply what, we don't have a capital budget.
But let me ask you that question. In your request for funding from the municipalities, is this funding your capital plan then? Or is it going, so I'm a little concerned.
It goes into operating.
We don't have, okay, so our direct contributions are going to operating, and it's not based on the capital plan?
It is not based on the capital plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, when you came to us for a request for that, did you include your capital plan in that request, though?
A, a copy of it?
Yes, meaning the amount you're requesting from the municipalities, that included the operating plan, but you're kind of saying that's a wish list.
It is, or the capital, the capital plan is.
You said operating just a second ago, and he's talking about capital, so.
So I provided, of course, a copy of our operating budget, as well as our capital plan. You know, and if we don't outperform our operating budget, we're really not able to afford the items that are in the, the capital plan without taking away from, of course, our, you know, funding reserves.
Okay.
And, you know, and obviously for things like ambulances and cardiac monitors, we will tap into those funding reserves to be able to fund them, because they're absolutely necessary, you know?
So let me follow up again with that. So in your request for municipal contributions, it is simply a request for operating budget monies? If you fall into a, a positive, then you'll go into your plan. Is that correct?
Yes. Then we're able to, to afford our operating, our, our capital plan without tapping into our financial reserves.
My question is, the next question is that, so all the grant monies that you're going after with Michael Foley, and he's doing great.
He's done an amazing job.
That goes towards your capex, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, the majority of those programs, those items have been capital items, you know, whether that be CPR devices or, or the ambulances and so forth. Stretchers, you know, all of those things have been for that. I think there's also, I wanted to clarify, I had heard, you know, that there was some confusion with respect to future plans that we have. Obviously, we have our station here in Mechanus that we've put a lot of money into over the recent years. Everything from a roof to metal siding that was falling off, and the roof had holes in it, to making some improvements in Syria. We've also had to do the same things at our Franklin Park Station, as it is currently, you know, we're actually in the Wexford Fire Station. We're in a small room in the basement of the fire station. It is our goal, all right, to get out of that building and to be able to have some sort of, of an independent ambulance station. Because the, the living quarters that we're in, they're really just not conducive, you know, to our, operating the ambulance service for our crews, right? So we are working closely with Pine Township, as well as even AHN on, on possibilities. But there is absolutely no plan for us to fund such a building on our own. It goes back to, it goes back to that capital plan, and you'll see nowhere on there, is there any plan for us to build our own building and fund it, but we don't have that.
Has AHN given you indications that you're going to be able to get, take some space from them?
Uh, we've had long, very serious discussions, you know, and I remain optimistic that we're going to be able to do something with them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
More questions?
You know, just, we have to be very fiscally responsible and be ready to answer questions from our residents here. So, you know, one of the things that, being an authority, you know, the library, if we look at, you know, we give a significant contribution to our library, we're happy to do it. We have one of the best, like, just like the ambulance service, we've got the best right here. So when, but every year, the library comes to us with a request. So, but what you're asking for is more of a five, the five-year commitment. So how, how, how do we look at what we do with the library, and why should we do it differently with the ambulance authority?
Yeah, and I don't necessarily know that I can answer that exactly, right? I, I can say that we certainly do intend on continuing to report, you know, our financial performance and our operational performance to you. It's not a matter of give us the money, and we, you'll never hear from us again, it's nothing like that. But, you know, from our perspective, you know, you wouldn't expect me to tell you anything less than the ambulance is more important than the library, right? And that's my job, right? You know, so, and I think, you know, you obviously recognize that, I think the library needs are probably different from a capital over the years than an ambulance, right? So an ambulance, we will put 20,000 miles a year on an ambulance, they cost $400,000 today to replace, you know? So from my perspective, you know, we need to be able to forecast the future with respect to our needs, and being able to rely on municipal funding in that way, that is probably the best answer I can give you. I think that was a really good answer.
That's a great question.
It was, it was a great question.
More questions?
Thank you, thank you for all you guys did. Thank you.
Trish?
You're doing a great job, Chris, thank you very much.
I, you know, you know, I know people in other ambulance authorities, so we shouldn't have to brag about.
I have a few more, if you don't mind.
No, of course.
In your five-year plan, you're asking for, let's call it 1.7 million between all the municipalities.
Sure.
And in your expenses, you actually show it as expenses towards ambulances and services.
Okay.
Correct? Or is that not the case in your presentation there? You listed the cost of those ambulances, 1.4 basically.
Okay.
So there's 300,000, and again, that's, that's why I'm kind of confused when you say it's not for CIP, but you're listing all that as an expense, but you're saying that if you don't have the money, you're not going to do that. I'm a little, I think I need a little bit more of an explanation there, if you don't mind, or a chance to re-review this.
Yeah, um, I mean, when you were referring, are you referring to the, to the blue page?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that what we're trying to say there is, you know.
Those are costs that are coming up in your capital improvement plan.
Right.
But my concern is you telling me then that the municipal contribution isn't going to that.
If we don't have the municipal contribution, you know, we will have an operating deficit. If we have an operating deficit, it's that much harder, you know, for us to be able to afford these things, you know? We don't see the municipal contribution as going toward the capital, the capital expenses.
Sure, but if we don't have it, it covers it. I mean, we can't say.
Right.
If we don't give you that 1.7, then you're not going to buy any of those things, and you'll just do in-house side.
We will continue to do the, we will continue to have to, at that point, take from, you know, our limited cash reserves, which would get spent down. And at some point, we would have to come in and be asking for a lot more money, because, you know, we don't have anything left in the bank. I, I think that's the best way I can answer your question, you know? But our cap, our operating budget is based on there being X number of municipal, municipal contributions over the next, you know, five years. And anything that we spend, like I said, on capital, really is, we have to outperform our budget to afford those items. So without the municipal contribution, it's that much harder to, to fund those.
Well, that's my question then. So the 1.7 municipal contributions just keeps you afloat, and then you still need an additional 1.4 for your CIP?
And so, which we hope to obtain through grants and those types of things, yeah.
You have some board members in the audience shaking their heads, so now I'm a little concerned here.
Because the cost of purchasing the ambulances is built into the budgets that are prepared, so. I'm trying to think of that, if the money is all the same color, green.
Yeah.
And so you don't really have two buckets like that.
And I get that, I did, and that's what I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, the municipal contribution is good. I don't want, this is, you know, term length and everything else, and that's the concerns of everyone in council here. I want to make sure we're on the same page of understanding that, you know, the municipal ask is 1.7 basically over five years. And that's going to fund your operating plus your plan for CIP, let's call it.
And it's just was covering the CIP, sure. I mean, ultimately, right, I mean, it's, it's, it's really not, I don't know how I answer your, I don't know how, I think we're just.
You know, I, you know, your, your explanation, I got, your explanation, I didn't. Because basically what you said was 3.1 million, green is green, it's color of money. I get that, but the question was, you know, you're coming here and asking for operational funding, and you're not asking for CIP.
We're not.
Okay? All right. I think we understand one another. Am I wrong? Because there, there, is there a difference?
Yes, I mean, there is, because you, your CIP, whether you want to talk about it or not, is part of your budget. I mean, you can't think you're not buying ambulances with the next five years, so that's part of your, your budget. I'm assuming, you know, you're budgeting that in every year in order to have those replacements.
We need the replacements, but I, I don't want to mislead you, you know, we, we do not have, I mean, our capital plan is our capital plan, right? And we've been fortunate to be able to, through grants, and by outperforming our operational budget, to be able to afford those items.
Okay, is it the cost of readiness versus the, the entire budget we're talking about?
So, I mean, cost of readiness, you know, is a whole nother matter, you know what I mean? You know, we, we are expected to be here and on call and waiting for calls, and, you know, there's expense to that. I, I don't really know that I tie that into the, to what we're talking about.
Well, without asking any other questions, I just wanted to stay with you. After being, you know, that I attend most of the ambulance authority meetings, I think you have an exciting time that's happening now. You have a different time with Mr. Fazika and the board that we have right now. You know, you do a lot of positive things, it's another to, to raise capital.
Sure.
So I, I just want you to know, I appreciate that.
That's good. Can I ask the question a different way?
Sure.
If the municipalities commit to the full funding that you've requested, which is roughly 1.7 million dollars.
Sure.
Based on your revenues, based on your expected grants, et cetera, will you fully cover your capital plan over that five-year period?
We believe we would be able to, to do that, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I needed to hear it that way, that's what needed clarified, because you were saying before that it kind of wasn't, and it was worrying me that, you know, again, I don't want to see it come back in two or three years, oh, you know, we need another 1.4.
That if they commit to that, it's not committing to just operating, and then, then we still may need more in order to get to this capital improvement plan.
Sure, and, and we, and I think I shared with you, John, you know, sort of our, our like, long-term financial plan, the money we have, and, you know, how that gets spent. Because we will have to tap into our cash reserves over the years, and I shared that with you, John, you know, that whole plan, and what it looks like five years from now is not obviously as healthy as it is today.
We're living with the same dream.
Sure.
So, I mean, you know, there, nothing is going down.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, there's no cost that ever goes down.
One other concern, and I'm going to hear about it, when you look through some of your information, you look at grants, and I, and I know, and I, you sparked my memory, and you first came on, and I was first on council, asked about grants, and it was like, grants, what?
Yeah.
And you've done a wonderful job of grants, and that's, in '23, you netted 256,000 in grants. In '24, 401,000, and that was the first year of municipal contributions. '25, it went down to 364, it was the second year of municipal contributions. In '26, you're proposing it down to 155 in grants. Is there concern that with municipal contribution, your grants are going down?
Not necessarily, you know, it's just one of those things where we know which grants. Not necessarily, you know, it, it's just one of those things where we know which grants, when I look at twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, I know which grants are almost like guaranteed, you know, like just a state grant for this and a federal grant for that. Like, I can almost, I pen those in, you know, but we anticipate, to be very honest, we anticipate outperforming that hundred fifty-five thousand dollar budget. But it's a lot better for me to under, you know, predict, you know, than just to say, I'm going to make that much and then not, you know, I'm in trouble, you know.
We're just at the point where now these are tax files.
Sure.
So it's a contribution from our tax. We have to be, I will answer these questions of, you know, hey, you know, we're giving more tax dollars and they're getting less grant money in, in reverse. We'll hear that question. So I just want to.
And that may well be true, you know, I, I, because, um, you know, what we, we are working with, even with the county government on some decks, you know, we're trying to, we're trying everything we can.
And again, you've done wonderful, you've done above and beyond my expectations forever. It's just something I want to ask.
Sure.
Just so you're aware of how those numbers look, of what I'm going to hear as a councilperson from.
Hey, hey, and you do know, Chris, I mean, some of the questions that we're asking you, so the general public can hear.
And I'm glad to answer them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Be happier.
I said it before, I will not let you fail. I, I stand behind that for as long as I'm here.
Absolutely.
But I do have to ask the questions because I'm going to get the same ones, and this is my chance to ask.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and, and have the opportunity to, to answer them.
Um, one of my last, I, question here is, you presented a, a, I don't want to call it a contract, an agreement. It has a certain amount over a certain time period. If you had to choose between the time period or the amount, which one would be most valuable to you?
Well, I'd probably say the amount, you know, and, and then I will, of course, be back here, you know, after whatever period of time, explaining the same thing. And I don't mind explaining, you know, I mean, I, I greatly appreciate transparency and being able to explain everything to you and clear up any miscommunications, uh, that occur over time, you know, so.
We, we appreciate you coming here and taking that time, and I know it's a lot of time, and I know our library does it, and our three volunteer fire departments also do that, who are in the emergency sector.
Sure.
They come to us yearly with requests, we review their budgets and do the same. So it does extend into our emergency services, so in a yearly contract as well, um, something to point out. Those are the only questions I have. Are there any other questions from anyone else on council?
I'm just looking at, this might be too much math, there's too much math in my head. Uh, of the nineteen residents that subscribe, is there a percentage that would make the municipal contributions zero out or unnecessary or anything like that?
Done that math. I don't think it ever would.
Yeah.
I think even at a hundred percent, it will never get there on subscriptions alone, but that's me, that's not, you know the numbers better than I do.
Uh, the eighty, the eighty-five that we're at.
You guys recently voted to increase it, did you not?
No, we had to make a change with respect to how much we write off, right? So, uh, you know, what's happening with insurance companies, and I'm glad I have the opportunity to explain this for any residents that are listening as well, uh, is that, you know, what, what insurance companies are doing to ambulance services is really bad, right? Because, you know, you take, I'll just use simple numbers, like a thousand dollar bill, and they, they'll pay us, say, four hundred. They'll make the person's deductible, say, four hundred, and then the person, and then there'll be like two hundred dollar contractual allowance, you know, just bear with me, so they have those thousand dollars. If a person is a subscriber, right, they, they saved six, six hundred dollars by being a subscriber, right, which is wonderful, right? But we only received, say, four hundred dollars for that call, and, and that's actually a bad example, because I sit through our, you know, meetings with our, our billing company. And oftentimes, that number that we actually receive is like a hundred eighty-five dollars, right? So, because so much gets written off to contractual allowance and deductibles, and then the subscriber. So unfortunately, we've had to do what the rest of the industry has done, uh, and we're not able to write off a hundred percent anymore on the subscriptions, kind of reduce that to fifty percent. And that was actually a recommendation, uh, that was made by the consultant that had been hired by the municipality three years ago.
I guess that's the last thing, is, you know, I read through that thing cover to cover. Where are you guys in implementation of those recommendations?
I don't think there's anything that we hadn't mostly done prior to, uh, that you guys are actually getting the hard copy, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and with you guys, you know, working with us, uh, and being able to offer seats, you know, on the board for other residents, you know, of the other communities. That was a very huge, you know, thing, uh, for us to do, uh, and we do have someone from Pine on the board now, uh, so that is helpful, you know, so. But, you know, we look at that document, you know, we had really accomplished a lot of those things prior to you receiving that hard copy.
And again, I'll congratulate you on ending the contracts with H M and U P M C.
Sure.
They were killing you.
They were, you're right, so, and they had been in place for many years.
For the rest of the board, would you explain what the process was, what they were doing to you?
Yeah, sure, uh, and, and it's, it, it, I'm not taking too much time, I could talk all night, you know, uh, but I won't. Uh, but, uh, so, for example, I just used round numbers again, instead of the ambulance bills, a thousand dollars, I'm just going to put that thing. So, uh, is a thousand dollars, right? So, uh, what would happen, what happens today, because it won't happen again after August first, you know, is from, for a high mark invoice, for example. Uh, we are under contract, right, we're a participating provider. Uh, so we receive four hundred dollars, the other six hundred dollars, it gets all written off to contractual allowance and whatever also might happen with the person's deductible. So instead of receiving a thousand that we actually go for, we're receiving four hundred, right? Uh, and the only value of that for us is that Highmark sends us the check, right, sends us the patient's payment. Um, now that we won't be in contract, uh, the patients will receive the payment for the services that we provide, and then we just have to hope that folks will pay their ambulance bill, uh, instead of going on vacation. I've seen all this over the years, okay? So, uh, but, so by being out of network, we're anticipating, you know, that we work in a good community where we'll pay their bills and so forth, uh, but we have budgeted. There are a certain amount of not going to receive that, right? So, uh, but in the end, we anticipate a relatively big bump, uh, in revenue because of that. Uh, we have to do the same thing with our U P M C agreement, um, and unfortunately with that one, that they still continue to pay us, not the patient, so. Does that answer, does that, does that clear things up for everybody?
Yeah, it, it clarifies a whole lot.
Good.
Do you want to speak to where House Bill eleven fifty-two is?
Yeah, that's where I was drawing.
Yeah, so there's several things that we're working on with House Bill eleven fifty-two, uh, we're very active with the, uh, Ambulance Association of America, as well as the Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania. Uh, and, uh, one of the House Bill eleven fifty-two has several things, part, part of it is, uh, the direct payment legislation, you know, that they, insurance companies won't be allowed to do that, right? Because it's just downright bad. Uh, another component of it, uh, is there will be a, a goal, right, of, of the bill, uh, is for there to be a set rate, right, a fee schedule. Uh, instead of, you know, basically, we're asking for, uh, Medicare pays us about three hundred fifty, four hundred dollars per claim. Uh, we're asking for three hundred fifty percent of Medicare, right? So the auto insurances and all of the insurances will be required to pay us at that rate. And I, and I won't lie, those are the real costs of doing business, right? You know, when I look at, and I have lots of reports that can show those numbers to you, you know, if we don't do all of the things that we do from a grants perspective and subscription and other funding. We wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be able to stand here today, because, you know, as you, many of you might remember, you know, the key word when I first started here was, uh, our burn rate, right? I did my best to forget that term, you know, but like, we were really burning, you know, the money, uh, because we wouldn't, we weren't operating efficiently. Uh, but, you know, so House Bill eleven fifty-two serves to address a number of things like that.
And how would that impact you guys? That would be a game changer, right?
Well, and it goes back to that Highmark thing right off the bat, right, you know, where I won't have to worry about collecting a percentage of it, I'll be collecting a hundred percent of it, so that has a very positive, uh, impact on us. Um, you know, one of the things that's important for us as an agency, right, is we want to continue to professionalize our staff, right? We are fortunate to have a great group, but when we look at pay rates, comparing pay, pay rates of paramedics and E M Ts to our brethren, you know, in police and fire, you know, it's not the same, right? There's a pretty huge disparity, right? So one of the things that we want for the residents is to have a consistent group of paramedics and E M Ts that know the community, instead of being like other agencies that have a lot of turnover. And you're seeing new faces all the time, and those new faces have to take the time to learn the dynamics of the community and learn the roads and all those types of things. We believe that having a consistent staff is important, you know, and one of the things that we are working on, uh, is adjust, being able to adjust our pay rates and, you know, our, uh, even our, like, retirement plans and, and those types of things. To be able to be the most professional ambulance service we can possibly be.
Any other questions?
Maybe one thing we can do to help speak this one.
So I think that, uh, as, as the opportunity comes along, uh, I, one of the admissions is, uh, to contact each of our municipalities, right? And we'll be asking all the ambulance services in the state, but letters of support from councils and so forth, uh, to our, you know, state representatives and so forth, will certainly come in handy, and I appreciate that ask.
Any other questions? Should we put that in the town prior?
I think, I think we ought to do a resolution and send it to our state reps.
Yeah, the way to get action on that will be up.
Okay. Seeing no other questions from anyone else, thank you so much for your time this evening. Uh, we thank you for your time tonight, Chris. Thank you, gee. Uh, next item is public comment on agenda items. If you have any public comment on agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address.
Ellen Wright, nine six three five, Old Kuma Road, Allison Park, P A one five one oh one. Um, I enjoyed the ambulance presentation and questions, it was very nice. Um, I also want to, um, thank, um, McCandless for updating the, uh, planning commission agenda that, to now include the lot and block, so people will know where items are. Thank you. Um, my third item here is the, uh, Blazer Drive Amendment that's under twelve A on the new business. It doesn't exactly say where on Blazer Dive, and I think that parcel, I think that property is made up of numerous parcels, so I'm. And I didn't look at to, into it closely, but I, I feel like I've seen this on multiple agendas recently, and so I don't, you know, to have some kind of differentiation between what it is that's being approved here, and maybe an address or a lot and block number would do that. And then, um, it's my understanding that the timber harvest, that even though it still appears on the agenda, is not going to be on the agenda. So, um, since there, and I'm going to shorten my long comments that I had about that, but I can't resist, because, you know, I like trees. Um, I can't resist, um, making a comment. Um, I drove past it and there's a slope there, and, um, so that the plan to include the erosion and how that would affect the stream and the aesthetic of the, um, area by taking out trees. Um, it's a, you know, the trees that are there between the Ascension and the Ascension properties are really beautiful there and provides a whole lot. So those are my agenda comment items, thank you.
For your comments. Any other public comment on agenda items? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Rob Weber, and I'm a member of Ascension. And one of the reasons why we want to take those trees out back there, or, or, excuse me, the, the real large trees that are back there is we want to develop that land, but still keep it woods and have some paths back there, uh, a possibly a, uh, a grove of some type. And, and make it usable by us and the residents. As it is now, uh, it's, you know, woods like, like anywhere else, and it's just totally unusable. But we feel that, uh, if we take out the big trees, we can develop that land and have it usable for the community in a very positive way.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment on agenda? Seeing none, uh, the meeting minutes for town council of June ninth were emailed. Did everyone have a chance to review them?
I admit that we approved the meeting minutes in June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Uh, moving on to administration and finance report, uh, the finance report for the month of May, two thousand twenty-five. Can we get a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
There's been a motion to approve the checklist thing, is there a second? Second, second, Mr. Hart, any questions, discussion?
I'm going to abstain due to the reasons, the fourth amendment addressed to Mr. Swent.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Um, any further, uh, information on the financial summary?
Um, we'll see on your dashboard report, revenues for May twenty twenty-five were six point three million, which is up from prior years, five point nine million total. Uh, I did want to recognize Abby for her hardware run of the committee. Uh, our donations and sponsorships are flowing last year's totals completely out of the water. Last year at this time, we were at twelve hundred dollars and this year we're already at some. So, things out, we talk. Our expenses go, we're right behind where we were in twenty twenty-four, uh, we're currently at thirty-nine point. There is thirty-three point nine percent of the budget from twenty twenty-five versus thirty-three point seven percent of the budget from twenty twenty-four. Uh, and I just have a quick announcement regarding taxes, tax bills will be sent out July first, and, uh, following the discount period and August thirty-first.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, continuing on, the communications report was in your packet, are there any questions? Seeing none, uh, junior council members reports, we do not have a junior council member, but interviews will begin shortly. Liaison reports, M I D A, Mr. Arlo is not here, but there was no meeting. North Hills Council of Governments, uh, the minutes were in your packet, um, I think we talked about this too from the manager's report last meeting, uh, salt contracts was the big thing. Um, we now have, uh, negotiated with Morton and, uh, we got a bargain rate, not what they asked, but a little up from where it was previously, so. Any questions for North Hills Cog? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on administration and finance? Seeing none. We'll move on to planning and zoning reports, the planning director's report for the month of June.
Our first item on the staff report is the agenda item for later drive subdivision, plan number five, then the number four, mortgage subdivision. Um, this is one of the, the fourth subdivision, um, on a weight drive plan, the minor subdivision, the fourth town, they're building, they constructed in the end square. Nine seven three three, nine seven three nine, Hoffman Street. Regarding. It's a motion made by the planning commission recommending. Moving to department updates, we have a summer intern that is currently working, um, to the U K graduate student that's working, uh, archiving and taking a, uh, basically a comprehensive catalog of our historical documents, satellite items, files, getting everything kind of set up for building zoning and making sure that in the future we have a sort of database where you can tell where our files are and we have a catalog. Um, second item on the department updates, uh, permanent application updates. We're currently reviewing several of the permanent applications with the goal of providing applicants with clear, clear guidance applying for buildings and increments and revising the grade permits to better align with the ordinance number one five five five, which was adopted, uh, in March of this year. Happy to answer questions on that.
Question.
Moving on to review of town code, uh, we are currently in the preliminary process of reviewing the town code and, uh, aiming to make a zoning cleanup and a few other provisions to the code to clarify, strengthen different provisions relating to zoning and property maintenance and, uh, the sharing of initial information once we get further along in that process.
Thank you very much, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Okay, seeing none, liaison reports, planning commission, uh, that report is in your packet. Zoning hearing board, Ms. Cleveland.
Their most recent improvements are in the pocket, do you have any questions?
Okay. Uh, at this time, is there any public comment on planning and zoning?
I apologize, I don't have enough copies. Ellen Wright, nine six three five.
Ellen Ray, nine six three five Old Kuma Road, Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. I'm a little confused about the last item on the new business.
Not sure. I'm not sure from an organizational point of view, this is the part that I'm really referring to. I don't understand how the town manager can be the assistant zoning officer because I think that the town manager supervises the planning director and the zoning officer. And it sounds like an assistant zoning officer is supervised by the planning director. But that person is supervised by the town manager, but the assistant zoning officer is to be the town manager. I don't understand it from an organizational point of view, how that works. And I looked in the E code and McCandless doesn't list a assistant zoning officer, but they also, it doesn't appear that there's, which isn't, you know, meaning that you can't have one, but it doesn't seem like that there's a job description either for the assistant zoning officer. So until that was clarified, the part where the town manager is appointed as the assistant zoning officer, I would request that that's tabled until there's a job description and until there's a clarification as to how that works from an organizational point of view. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on planning and zoning? Seeing none, we'll move on to recreation reports, parks rec director for the month of June.
Do you think everyone? I'm sure the community needs to be used so far. So that line item is for two or three. Right now. Why do you want to score, we gave these, but the little one that had celebrate? It's twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars before. Last year she was at seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Yes. So that is definitely something to celebrate tonight for all of those who have holes in the freezing house.
Let's work for the ambulance.
Also, your packet was our report for the month. I'm happy that it's written, I'm not going to elaborate on anything now. Yes, it is. I wanted to point out a program that would start July first. The plan for that was a, I'm happy. So I'm going to begin that on July first, it will be sold here at town hall. And to man a ride to school in a campus vehicle, so that'd be a police, police car, the three fire trucks, a T P W dump truck and. We are really fun. Fun contest to do. My thought was to run it through July and pack all those. And then the final day of sales would be a community day. All the names, the letters that they have. We had our first study meeting, our public open house last Thursday. It went very well. We had a good turnout, I'd say we had six five less people, we had really bad. But forty-five of them signed in, so we at least had that money. Passion had draft concepts of whole projects. They also had interactive boards asking programs and facilities that you can create parks. And at this time of the week, the comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Abby? Seeing none, continuing on liaison reports, F D P C, Mr. Hart.
Oh, the Heritage Center Gala will be held on November first at the Camelot Event Center in Wexford. It's two fifty Swindman Drive. It's a kind of across from H and near the waterfall. Mine sheets. So we'll put that on the website soon, be able to get tickets. And if anybody's interested in sponsoring, we're still open up, open up for sponsors tables.
Thank you, sir. Activities advisory, I thought committee, Ms. Clune, it looks like there was not a meeting. At this time, is there any public comment on recreation? Seeing none, the town manager's report.
I'll just make a few highlights from the report. First, we did receive seven applicants for our junior council person this year. I think that number is pretty good. We're going to start to perform interview process next week and then direct this candidates to council. Staff was trained on MS four requirements during the past month. We will also have a training upcoming in a few months for council at their meeting here. We'll give brief presentation by gateway on our MS four requirements also. Police officer application period is coming to a close. I think as of the end of today, we had fifteen applicants for at least two positions that need to be filled. The ad will be going in the paper for the North Meadow sidewalk bits to be received. This is going to be a two-part process, one for the south side of the road, the other as an ad alternate for the north side of the road, where we're still working on closing out a right-of-way agreement with one property owner in order to connect that to the crosswalk near nineteen. Compliment our public works through for their flooding cleanup efforts from the past week, including their catch basin repair work and catch basin cleaning beginning for the paving project that will take place later in the summer. Abby's been doing a great job with our parks master plan, two meetings last week, one with the neighbors directly, directly near the new piece of land as well as townwide group that met on Thursday. And then community day planning is well underway also. Under the miscellaneous, the last thing I'd like to point out is we've worked with our volunteer fire departments towards coming up with standardization when it comes to standard operating guidelines and bylaws. And we had a meeting with Rob Brady of Rob Consulting, who I got the blessing from our volunteers to allow him to help us with this process. So we've agreed to start with working on our bylaws and our standard operating guideline second, which is a big step forward in making sure that everybody's interoperable and all working from the same book.
I wanted to make one comment there. You know, we, during the flooding period here the other day, we had an emergency over at the Girl Scout camp in North Park. And while that turned out to be a pretty easy thing to solve, it was really impressive to see that we have very well-trained first responders that were able to be on site and reassure not only the Girl Scouts that were stuck, but the parents of those kids. So I just want to do that shout out publicly to our, our first responder.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the town's engineer report was also included in your packet. Those questions can be directed towards Mr. Schwend.
Mr. Schwend. There's a lighting project that is supposed to happen over at the Heritage Cultural Center.
Yes.
How far away are we from that?
So the engineers have given us two different options for lighting for that parking lot in order to adequately light the parking lot to meet the standards required in the ordinance. We will either need to put two poles on the NMR roadside and two poles on the town hall side that light the parking lot, or we would need to put two poles in the center that had lights on both sides. So that's what we needed to figure out was based on amperage of the service box at the Heritage Center and the length of the runs, what would be the best way to do this for the least amount of money? So right now we're analyzing that. We should have that done this month and we should be ready to put it out to bid next month.
Thank you. Okay, town attorney's report.
My report was also in the packet. And if anybody asks questions, we can talk offline or have an executive session. That's the end of my report.
Mr. Corville, old business, Mr. Schwend.
For under old business, we had listed the requested waivers that had been presented last month from Robert Laverick on behalf of Ascension Lutheran Church. I did have a conversation with Mr. Laverick last week, asking him for additional information. And we talked again today. After he came to the meeting, he did take to heart the questions. And I think the church did also that were asked about the two waivers that were requested. So with respect to the twenty-five foot tree top and slash waiver, they decided to withdraw that request and felt that if they were going to move forward with the project, they would meet the, meet the standards of the code. With respect to the number of trees to be harvested, I did ask that he reevaluate the woodlot since the last time he did that had been a significant amount of time ago in two thousand twenty-four. Since then, he decided to categorize each one of the trees specifically per our code, which describes a mature tree as sixteen inches diameter at breast height, so about chest high. He went back through, categorized the woodlot, counted trees that had already fallen and removed those from the request. And as you can see, the details in the packet, his number after a proper recount brings the removal of live trees down to thirty-six percent, which is less than the code requirements. So therefore they can withdraw their second request. Part of the details to this too include that as out of an abundance of precaution, he had counted thirteen additional trees being damaged during this and he was able to change the logging pattern inside that woodlot to avoid those thirteen trees. That really helped that number also. So with those two, and obviously, you know, withdrawing these requests, we can process this administratively. We will check it and make sure it complies with the code and inspect it as the project moves on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schwend.
And thank you to Mr. Laverick and to the members of the church who heard the neighbors' concerns and heard the concerns from council too on that and found a way to get this project done within compliance with code.
And I agree with Mr. Schwend's evaluation. Actually got a chance to walk that lot and it is a mess. And they do need to harvest some trees to actually make it safe for the neighbors.
Great. Continuing on to new business, first item here is the Blazer Drive subdivision number five. This is the mortgage subdivision. This is a housekeeping item. If there's someone willing to make that motion.
Make a motion to approve the Blazer Drive subdivision number five amendment for mortgage subdivision application submitted by Spurdoot Surveying located on Hopkins Street. It was reviewed by the town engineer in their letter dated May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five and recommended for approval by the planning commission.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item up is again, housekeeping item, these come in front of council for approval. This is a deferred retirement option plan for an officer. Is there a motion out there?
A motion.
Mr. Hart?
No relation. Action concerning drop for Richard, motion to accept the deferred retirement option plan agreement and election of Officer Hart, Richard Ford.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Casey, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next up is cleaning up name signatures for the deferred pension plans. As we've changed our finance administration, we, housekeeping item, just updating signatures. Somebody willing to make that motion?
I can make this motion, please. Motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash zero nine, a resolution amending resolution number seven of the two thousand twenty-two series by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to town and McCandless defined benefit pension plans.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is a partial bond release. It's for a minimal amount regarding the Eco Village and this was reviewed and approved by Gateway Engineers.
Thank you, commission.
Please.
Motion to approve partial bond release number four of the Rachel Carson Eco Village Performance Bond in the amount of three thousand five hundred three dollars, ten cents per the town engineer's review letter dated June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Roll, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I will comment, there was confusion on behalf of that applicant that they thought they needed to submit a monthly release request. We have screened that up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a pretty nominal amount.
We'll see less. Okay, thank you for that. Next is actually concerning the appointment of the zoning officer and the assistant zoning officer with our new hire, Matt. This is so we can make everyone official. Is there someone willing to make this motion?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Matthew Ennis as the town zoning officer and Mr. George Schwend as the assistant town zoning officer.
There's been a motion, is there a second? I'd be delighted to second. Seconded by Mr. Casey, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. At this time, is there any public non-agenda comments?
Allison Park, PA. I just wanted to talk about tree canopies in general and preserving, not having habitat fragmentation. One person's over mature tree might be an old growth tree, perhaps going back to the beginning when the town was formed in a hundred and seventy-five years ago. That might be one to be celebrated when we celebrate our hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. It's kind of warm outside. Looking online, I see between, I don't know, ten degrees, twenty-five degrees, but significantly lower temperatures because of tree canopy. Tree canopy prevents, reduces water runoff. We're talking about flooding and it boosts property values so that it would maybe, you know, some kind of initiative where we can encourage McCandless residents to preserve their tree canopy, you know, even if there's financial incentives for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? So is there a second? Second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.